Go from second to third and so on and so forth. So just making sure that we're prepared for as many of those different things as we can be. Um, our PD time continues to be focused on our MTSS processes. Uh, we're spending a lot of time kind of refining that process and, and making sure that, uh, we are putting those systems of supports in for all students, um, and then giving staff time to work on and try and meet their, uh, individual teacher professional development goal, their IT PDP goal. So, and then the staff attendance is listed per the board goals.
Thank you. Mr. Hertz?
Uh, I started with just some general information about parent teacher conferences. I included the data there. Attendance wise, we had teachers track that. Um, just if a parent attended any conference, we marked it as attended. So those percentages could represent a parent who came to, ten conferences or just one, they counted it as one out of the two hundred and four possible students or three hundred-ish students. So, um, happy with the percentages. They may, you know, seem on the lower end possibly, but I think our average, this time last year was kind of that twenty-seven-ish and, you know, we're at thirty-three, thirty-six, uh, seven, eight, thirty-six, nine, twelve, thirty-three. We did make a, an, an extra push this semester to have each teacher reach out to ten parents. Hopefully, if you have students, you were contacted. Um, to kind of a personal, hey, we'd like you to come to conferences. Think the process in the past has been, some are doing that, some are. We kind of set a goal of everybody reach out to ten and then we tracked who was contacted and, and almost every single student's parents got a contact. Not, not everybody, but almost every parent did. And I think that improved attendance. So that's our practice will continue. And with the changes we're looking at calendar-wise with conferences, we're hoping to see that number continue to increase. So. We did partner with, uh, Avera Medical Group, Sibley and Osceola Regional Health Center to bring in four separate speakers.
Thank you.
They've got the, uh, handout, you know, one pager attachment there. Those were our speakers. Topics were really great information. Not well attended in person. It was also the nicest, two nicest days of the year. So it's kind of bad timing there, but, um, the videos and the live streams were, were pretty well attended and those views continued to increase. So, we'll also post those on our Facebook page just to get that information out. But, you know, things from tobacco use to screen time to child development. It was just, great to, to have them, and they're interested in coming back. So we'll look at continuing to partner with them to get that information to parents. Certainly, if you have ideas as board members, how to get more attendance at those, I'm, all years, I'd love to see the room packed on a, on a Tuesday night at conferences. That'd be great. Um, activities, robotics has their, uh, competition. They're leaving the twentieth, so just a couple of days. Track in, uh, track has a meet tomorrow and Thursday, indoor meets. Soccer practices underway. Golf will be starting here soon. Individual speech. We had two, um, state, all-state qualifiers we'll hear about in, uh, recognition of excellence. So lots of things, you know, going on, wrapping up or getting started. Esports, um, is, is kind of midway. They've had a few events. Solo ensembles will be held April sixth. Our jazz choir and jazz band are kind of wrapping up their seasons here. They have a few more things to go. So, still kind of a busy time of year. Something's starting, something's ending, but all exciting stuff for our kids. Uh, looking at next year, um, just kind of talking about plans, schedules, uh, we do plan to incorporate success, five, twelve, and require that for students. Want to, uh, continue to offer opportunities in an intervention time. That's something Kent and I have talked a lot about. There just not being a good time to pull kids. We're looking at, success being a part of that. Um, social emotional learning is that SEL component and community building. That's kind of feedback we've gotten from students. Is, that's a piece that's missing, that belonging, being in general. Those are things that we'll work on in success, um, in, in relationships with staff and students. And then at the high school level, career and college readiness is an aspect we want to include there as part of our D cap plan, district career and academic planning. That's a piece that other schools are doing that we, we haven't been, because we haven't required success. And so that's something we'll incorporate into next year. Our PD, we continue to focus on MTSS, um, and, and trying to incorporate those plans. Next year, what that will look like in, in having intervention time. I think that will help improve our overall process of MTSS. So. We do have, ALPA testing, uh, is underway or wrapping up. That's English language proficiency exam. That'd be for our EL students, to see what their English language proficiency is. And then, as Kent said, ISASPS, April second is when we start. So that'd be, that'd be a big week for us. And then staff attendance at the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz.
Any questions?
I would just encourage people to go watch those videos of the presenters that, um, were at conferences. They were excellent, gave a lot of really great information. And, so take the time to check those out on the YouTube page.
Yep, uh, YouTube and we'll link it on Facebook.
On Facebook, okay.
You gonna have enough space to get all the changes for success and intervention then?
Space within the schedule. Yep, we're looking at a few options of when it will be during the day, um, and kind of based on when it is, that affects the length. One option we're exploring is, uh, having it opposite of lunch. And so instead of having maybe a three lunch shift, five A, five B, five C, it would be you're either in lunch or you're in success and then you flip flop. Um, penciling those numbers out, it wouldn't impact the time within the classroom. So class periods would still be forty-three minutes. Um, that fifth hour class, which is longer because it's lunch, would be the same size as the other class periods if we do go opposite lunch or during lunch, basically. So, good question.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. DeZao?
Um, yeah, listen, I won't read through everything, but one of the, the big things when we're talking about strengthening district literacy and math scores, obviously, last month, we approved, the calendar for next year. So that kind of sets the wheels in motion, um, trying to, from that, then align up our PD calendar and schedule. So we've been working on that. And it made progress. I mean, our goal would have been have, probably to have that done or close to, and we just haven't got there yet because of time and, not because of a lack of effort, but we're still working on that and using our instructional coaches and things so forth. Um, I don't have that on here, but one of the things has just been trying to advocate for us as a district and state in education. And, yeah, you can hear us talking about the impact of the A A A, but that's, I'm glad that some of the people from there came and just told a little bit of their story and, some of the things they had to share. So that's good to hear it from a different perspective. Um, been working on negotiations with, uh, teachers and, um, we don't have that done, but just talking through things with them. So looking forward to do that and going through that process. Um, last month, talked about in the board meeting, we put our sharing agreements together for next year. I don't know that anything will be added to that, but if it is, I'll keep you updated. And just focusing on balancing our staff needs with the budget and things that we've been talking about all years, taking some of our time here. And then some of the other things that I've done just for the, the third goal that I have, um, since the last, yeah, since the last board meeting, we've, um, attended ISFLIC, Kendra and myself. Um, been talking with SiteLogic and you saw some of that work when we had our work session. Um, we've been focusing a lot on the save PEPAL projections, which we'll talk about later tonight, and, and our management fund, things like that. And then just, to be honest, spending a lot of time on the budget and the hearing process, which we'll, get into next week. So that's basically where a lot of my time's been spent.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, our board committees?
Um, facilities, we met on last week and then some of the things that we approved, you'll see tonight. I don't know if you guys wanted to add anything to that. I mean, it's pretty basic.
No, we can discuss it, I guess.
Yep, and when we get there, we can discuss that. And obviously continuing the discussion here in a little bit, when we talk about our work sessions and the next step, that's all kind of part of that. Um, finance, we've met and talked about different things and, um, getting contracts out for next year and things like that, moving on that, um, front. The policy committee, we, we've met a lot this year. We did not meet in this last month, but we did meet virtually. I sent something to them, for approval that we need approved tonight because it's something that was brought to our attention that needs to be approved annually and I'll discuss when we get there. So, that's really all I've discussed. Does anyone that was on one of those committees have anything to add that I didn't already mention? That's it.
Okay. Moving on to recognition of excellence. Ava?
Okay, so the Sibley individual speech team is proud to announce that we had two students and three pieces nominated for the all-state festival. Congratulations to Erica Rosenberg and Gabe Van de Hoof. It is a huge honor and accomplishment to be selected. The students will travel to Cedar Falls to perform at U and I on March twenty-fifth. So the performing pieces that were selected were, it was Erica Rosenberg with her acting piece, Multiple Personality Murder, and Gabe Van de Hoof with his solo musical theater, I Love Betsy. And the non-performing act was Erica Rosenberg's poetry piece, The Perfect Shade. And congratulations to the jazz choir for qualifying for the Iowa Vocal Jazz Championship. This team consists of Caitlin Nobles, Bailey Grease, Ella Ryder, Sakura Alanis, Grace Beavers, Emma Holmbeck, Cora Ruder, Rachel Dagel, Ashton Gleason, Elliot Dakar, Wyatt Cry, Christian Gleason, Nathan Crosby, Keaton Crowett, Alan Mejia, and Gabe Van de Hoof. And for FFA, Alexis Holstein, Hallie Pedley, Macy Pollan, Marshall Skipoff, and Claire Vreeman will receive their state FFA degree at the FFA State Convention in April. Katie Krueger placed second in the FFA Creed Speaking LDE and will compete at the FFA State Convention. Reagan Rucci received a gold rating in Prepared Public Speaking at the FFA District Convention. Michael Block, Aiden DeZao, Jana Dreesen, Cassidy Hendricks, Teagan Hendricks, Macy Hoekstra, Ca- Chris Holstein, and Brooke Platt received the FFA Academic Achievement Award. And for the February Generals of the Week, um, the first week of February, elementary was Addison McDyer, middle school was Olivia Daker, high school was Kaylee Maxwell, and staff was Nancy Soeth. And for the ninth of February, the elementary was Santiago Mejia and Jose Hernandez Perez. Middle school was Juana Perez Morales. Uh, high school was Ray Tripp and staff was Hannah Earl. And then the sixteenth, the elementary was Sydney Rockman, middle school was Tristan Wingate, high school was Eliza Chersey, staff was Samantha Dirks. And for the twenty-seventh, um, the elementary was Emery Jansen, middle school was Ricardo Uribe Perez, high school was Tristan Voss, and staff was Danielle Grothers.
Thank you, Ava. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Mr. Wedge?
Where are you going? Can you guys see that okay, the, the Google Doc? Okay, thank you for projecting that, Mr. DeZao. Um, good evening. My name is Mike Wedge. I'm the high school science teacher and, a high school science teacher and the science curriculum coordinator. So what I do do tonight is take you through, an overview of the science curriculum. And I'd like to follow the APL system that we use at, in our classrooms. So the objectives, so by the time this presentation's over in a, hour and a half?
Yeah, try and keep it all right.
Okay. Um, we'll check to see if you accomplish these objectives, provide evidence that the science staff is implementing district initiatives with fidelity, share favorite activities from our science teachers. Number three, discuss how ISASPS and ACT data can be used to determine how effective, we are at hitting science standards. The bell ringer, so there's something we do in our classrooms when the kids walk in the door is get them to think. So, the question I have for the school board members and administration team is, what is something you enjoyed and did not enjoy about your science experience in school? So I'm gonna put you on the clock for a minute. I'd like you to talk to your neighbor and I'll come around to make sure you're doing this, making sure that, I stand next to students that are undoubtedly need a little extra help. Use proximity to make sure things get done in the classroom. So I'll probably just stand right here. Um, please take a minute, discuss with your table partners, what is something you enjoyed, and did not enjoy about your science experience, elementary, high school, middle school, college, wherever. One minute. Ready, set. I'll need two people to volunteer when the buzzword is off. So, one minute, ready, set, go.
I did, I will say, I did not like stoic. That's when you figure out. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I liked, I liked, yeah, one of the instructors I had. Um, but the other one that I, I, I was near it, it was career. Give us a quiz, set the quiz on our lab table. And then when you're done, he's like, create this, and then turn it into my desk. When you finish, right? So, yeah, we, uh, passed that class fairly easily. So, didn't learn a lot.
Thank you for discussing your teammates. I need two volunteers to share, um, their answer if they could for me, please. Well, thank you.
I was fortunate to have Dave Keel as a science teacher and I will say that he made it applicable. He made it enjoyable, interesting, um, fun. I, I mean, it was just good.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Need one more for sure. More if we want to.
I can share.
Thank you.
Um, we both said dissecting anything was disgusting. Not our favorite at all.
Sure. I thought it was supposed to be amazing.
Awesome.
I was expecting that too. Now I didn't know. I thought it was cool.
And I, I overall liked science. I enjoyed it in high school, so.
Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Mr. Hertz, we have to hear from you as a science-y person.
I shared in college, I wasn't a big fan of stoic geometry, which is why I was a bio major in that, chem. In, in high school, I did have, I was fortunate to have a lot of good instructors. So, yep.
Awesome. That's what I liked about it. Thank you for sharing. That's typically what we do. Um, bell ringers take two, three, four, five minutes, it depends. It's a way for us teachers to, judge are we heading in the right direction before we take a test and it's, oh my gosh, I had no idea that, nobody knew stoic geometry until it's too late. So, um, I think the science department, we're, you know, we don't, we don't toot our own horns, but I think we do a pretty good job of getting the bell ringers in each day. Um, so I went through some talking points. I guess it's kind of the format. Um, the first talking point I have, and every so often I'll stop the presentation to do a quick, minute, something that you found interesting, something you want to share, something that provoked a thought. So I'll continue to use the APL strategies of engagement. That's one way as teachers can try to, make sure students are pay, uh, paying attention. And I will say, it's just helpful to, too, when I ask my daughter, I need you to la, 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 take out the trash. What I need, what, what do you need to do? Um, paint the house. No, 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 no. Take out the trash. Oh, yeah, yeah. A quick review to make sure we remember what we did, what we're supposed to do. Um, last year, the science department underwent a curriculum review. Once every five, six years, Mr. DeZao?
I think it's.
Seven?
Six or seven.
Six, seven?
Yeah.
So we went through that last year. Um, district science teachers concluded that new textbooks were not necessary. Since our previous curriculum review, we had purchased new textbooks, trade books, um, literary, literary resources. Thus, this past year, we invested in new STEM resources and activities to further our goals towards more differentiation and hands-on approaches. While still working to cover our literacy goals, we prioritize on compliance with district initiatives by continuing to incorporate closed reading strategies at all levels. This takes the form of small group reading using trade books in elementary, all the way to practicing critical reading of ACT passages in the high school. This will be our tenth year of doing ACT passages in the high school. I'll talk more about the data to support that claim. Later, continuing to provide students opportunities to productively struggle through challenging activities, discussions, and problems, and to hone their growth mindsets. We especially work to emphasize you don't understand yet. Number three, we continue to emphasize formative assessment using the bell ringers, objective checks, and exit tickets, that enable students and, and teachers to better determine their level of understanding before a major test is given. Um, I went through a bell ringer. Objective check is what we did at the very beginning. Here's what this lesson's about. I'll be seeing if you understand here when we're done. And then an exit ticket is something similar or before your, um, typically we'll say your ticket out the door. What is, what was the, whatever we talked about today. What's the form of photosynthesis or whatever the case was. Um, and fourth, continuing to employ APL strategies, especially time on the clock, and push-pull that help engage students and limit teacher talk, something that we're all very guilty of. A push-pull strategy would be, I come over to Jamie, I say, okay, take a minute, talk to your partners about, um, photosynthesis. How much time, Stan? Yep. How much time? Good. Ready, go. And then I'll come over to Jamie. Okay, tell you what, take another minute, I'll come back, or take another twenty seconds, I'll come back and we'll check in on you. He's obviously, maybe needs a little more time to think, maybe a little distraught, whatever. Come back in twenty seconds and we'll, we'll talk more. That usually helps the kids like, okay, I gotta, I gotta think about this. He's gonna, gonna give me a little more space before I have to answer a question. Um, I'd like to take thirty seconds, we'll move it along a little quicker, thirty seconds. Please discuss with your table partner, um, which one of those, um, district initiatives, do you think, um, because they're all important, but which of those four district initiatives that, that all dis- all curriculum groups are, are to be doing? Which one do you think is, based on talks with your own children, something you've seen, heard about, um, that you think makes an impact? Or do you have a question about one of those strategies, how it works, um, at the effectiveness? So thirty seconds, talk to your partner, which one of those district initiatives do you think is, important or something you've heard about talking to your own children or somebody else in the district? Thirty seconds, go.
I have heard more than one student say, you don't understand yet.
What's that? Um, they're getting better. So like, I don't get this, well.
The formative assessments.
Yes.
Not a boy.
You'd be surprised what it did. Anyone that you guys, talk to your kids.
Their mom does give them STEM, uh, kids for Christmas, which I thought was kind of.
That is cool.
Kiwi, do you know what you use?
Huh?
Do you know what, do you know what kits you use?
No, I don't.
Kiwi is a brand?
Mm-hmm.
Giving those to nieces and nephews for Christmas stuff. They like it a lot.
Ain't gonna get too hard for me to figure out.
It makes you.
You'll get there. Just keep trying.
I think I'll just stay right here for a whole time. Um, anybody like to volunteer? One of those district, these are initiatives that the school board pushed through, um, passed, supported. Anyone that you're curious about how effective it is or anything, any talking point or anything you've seen or heard?
I guess number three. I've seen heard witnessed that it's useful, the bell ringers, the objective checks, whether it's in biology, chemistry. And then I'll be like, so was, was that stuff on your test, like after the test? Yeah, but I should have studied this a little bit more because there's a little more of that.
Sure.
But a lot of that stuff, yes, is very helpful for the upcoming tests, my kids have said. So I hear a lot of that.
Yeah, conference is interesting you say that because, um, a lot of the parents, wow, you know, I've just, you know, this biology's just pah, on my head. I said, that's perfect because if your student can't explain to you, we know what's gonna happen on the test. But if Suzie can explain at least part of it, you're the most helpful study person ever. More helpful than me, more helpful than even your buddy, because if you, if you can explain to mom, and I know, we always make jokes about, I don't know, these parents are, uh, uh, they're not very bright and we gotta take them through it and it's, it's, they kind of joke about it, but you guys are a very valuable resource because you can, if you're confused, hey, hey, I, don't blame me. You're the one explaining it to me. So, I appreciate hearing that. Any other, um, comments? That's good input. Um, talking point two, I probably go through all of these, uh, but it is interesting. I had our science teachers, um, briefly discuss, um, their favorite activities. Mrs. Roseberry kindergarten talked about, um, the building bricks Lego challenge. I just talked to her just the other day. She said her kids just beg to do, um, Lego STEM building and it's a useful carrot and stick, um, to get the kids get to some of their stuff done. Um, Mrs. Two G, and we just have phenomenal science teachers. Um, I've said this since I've been here, we have just every grade level. We're very fortunate to have such, um, impactful science teachers. Uh, Mrs. Two G continues to do her, um, she's very proud of her sound unit and she's worked hard to get that, it's very abstract, especially for first graders. She's worked very hard to make that interesting and, um, visual for the kids. Uh, Mrs. Rockland in third and fourth grade, um, they really went to town with, um, slash with all the snow days. The kids were inside a lot. And they were kind of getting sick of kicking the ball around. So she, they got STEM carts and she kids, she said the kids almost prefer to do that compared to recess. Um, stay inside, do puzzles, do marble circuits. Um, it's also another useful, um, carrot to offer the kids when they get their homework done. Um, uh, Mrs. Wedge talked about, um, her favorite unit or activity is the human impact. So how people affect the environment. It is pretty popular even in high school, um, how our actions is, in society affect the environment. Um, she enjoys her chemistry unit. Um, it is cool to get the sixth graders to come up and blow stuff up in the chem lab or, um, you know, do some of the things that we used to only let high school kids do that they can do at the middle school level. Uh, Mr. Two G, um, him and I innovated an activity where the kids actually use genetic principles rather than just memorize them. They use those principles to build a bug, an insect, based on dominant genes. And then they actually see if this bug can survive in the environment, but he changes. So it's, super interesting. He's pretty proud of the, uh, pocket labs he bought last year where the kids can actually do experiments with speed, momentum, not just a simulator. The kids actually get little cars. They, crash and drive and, um, all over the place. Um, I said one of my favorite activities is ninth grade where the kids discover how complex a candle is. Um, seemingly a, a simple device is actually very complex. Takes about a week to figure out how it works. I also enjoy the STEM challenges. The, um, physics kids just built their model houses using electricity. They built them themselves, wired them. Um, Mrs. Hench also enjoys human activity projects, especially freshmen, where the kids have the opportunity to, um, run their own city. And it's a, it's a simulation. They have to try and make decisions about, do I let this company in? If they're gonna pollute, um, more population means more, um, these problems. So it's, it's a nice way to end the, end the chapter. Um, what I'd like you to do is take thirty seconds, discuss through teammates. What activity looked interesting to you? And sorry, I went a little fast on that, but, um, just a quick thirty, what activity looked interesting to you? And maybe you've heard some of these from your, from your own children. Quick thirty, go.
Oh, they heard the wind now.
It's just been kind of cool.
Is that on, on the computer simulation?
They make, they, they input it and then they give them the kid, and they run it through their simulation and spit out the results every day.
Sure. I did something similar when I taught her science. Um, just need one, so I'll keep the presentation going. Would anybody like to volunteer their activity that looked interesting or fun? Mr. DeZao?
I kind of cheated, but I would have said this without watching it. I have always enjoyed when you guys do the fair haven with the freshman at the end of the year and just how, even some of the kids who may be up to that point haven't put in a lot of effort, I've seen get really involved when you guys have done that.
It's interesting, some of the kids that, you know, run the numbers to figure out, well, if I put a nuclear plant in, I can make more money and less pollution than I would have doing this. Or, um, just the opportunity for them to think through this and, or, um, well, I want money now, but then they end up polluting the environment, it could cost them way more later. So it's interesting to see them work through that. Thank you for sharing. Uh, the next talking point, uh, three and four are the science scores. So the, the first chart is the ISAS scores. Mr. DeZao mentioned the, state test will be taken here in a couple of weeks. Um, going back twenty nineteen, state of Iowa makes it really, really handy for anybody really to go back and look at any school, any scores. Um, very handy. So I punched in from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. Still not sure what happened to twenty twenty. Not sure what was going on that we didn't have state testing. So I punched in from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three, still not sure what happened to twenty twenty, not sure what was going on, that we didn't have state testing. But I com, I put in the middle school scores, ours versus the state. Then the high school level, ours versus the state, and then some surrounding schools, similar size, similar distance to us. Obviously, we're quite proud of our science scores. The tests are not content-driven, so it's not like, oh, I have to memorize or regurgitate the photosynthesis equation, it's all based on heavy reading of charts and graphs, passages, which trial proves this point, which claim can be supported by this data, so it's, it's a lot of critical thinking versus just information recall. And then our ACT scores, I'm also very proud of these. College readiness, I guess is the, is the ACT, ours versus other subject areas at SO, but also compared to the state and national level. What I'd like you to do is take a quick thirty seconds, talk to your partners, any bit of data stand out, a question you have, something that made you think? And then we'll, I, I prefer interesting questions to, than just recall answers, so if you have a question, I'd love to chew on it. So thirty seconds, talk to your neighbors. Something that stood out from all that data, I guess that's an ACT, go.
So this would be, well, I guess the middle school data, well, you have our middle school, but.
I don't have, I don't, I don't have their middle school.
Yeah, so, yeah, be the high school guy, and I don't know.
I noticed that, I noticed that. Two questions or observations? Mr. Hertz and I were talking about HLP. That's interesting, I, I sent an email to Jeff Sloan over at HLP, and, oh, I just, do my thing, and kids do projects and activities, anything more specific?
You know, we said the HLP score too is quite high, I'm like, hmm, what are they doing?
Is it an average? Do they have less kids taking the ACT?
Oh, the ISAS? I don't know, ISAS, yeah, definitely, fewer kids, definitely, it, yeah, you know, it doesn't take, in fact, just this past year, the current, the sophomores take the ISAS, which is unfortunate, because they used to do, the state used to mandate juniors take the, science has only taken fifth, eighth, and tenth now. Used to be five, eight, and eleven, which was nice, because eleventh grade was the last science year, so they had all their science in. Tenth grade, they only bought, don't have their chemistry in yet, so it, it does make an impact, so we had to move some chemistry stuff down to ninth grade, so the kids were at least familiar with that. It doesn't take long, so our, our junior class took it last year, it only took three or four kids to really bring our proficiency down, with only forty-some kids.
That would have been my question, these scores are proficiency scores?
Proficiency scores.
Percent of students that took the test that are proficient?
Yes, yep, it's, you could, you know, I took a stats class this past summer, you can make staff say anything you want them to, if you really manipulate it. But, yeah, I thought that was interesting, that it doesn't take a few kids to be that proficient to really bring down those proficiency scores with so few kids. It's a good challenge, we have the opportunity to, with so, with fewer kids, we have the opportunity to target those kids and do a better job of hitting them. It's always nice to be geolog. Sheldon especially. But it's difficult to find motivators for the kids. I think a better conversation with the kids from, from us as teachers saying, this is, you're not getting a reward, I mean, but it's a sense of pride. I think some kids were like, I had no idea these tests mattered. So I think we need to do a better job of communicating to the kids and parents that this isn't so much a life or death situation for you, but it is a point of pride for us as a school to say, hey, look at our scores, we have a lot to be proud of. A lot of kids too, in their defense, were like, geez, I didn't know it mattered, I guess maybe I'll try a little harder, as one student put it last year, so. I thought that was interesting. That's a good question. Another good question or observation? I just wanna say the ACT scores, it is fun when the kids come back with their ACT scores. What'd you get, what'd you get, what'd you get? And one student said last year, well, I was never worried about my science one, because we practiced it so much in class, and we start at the freshman level, and a little more assistance than we do at the junior level with reading those passages, but those are pretty tough passages, and the kids do a very good job, so that practice does pay off. Last couple of talking points, STEM Expo was the eighteenth of April. Super excited, but a tremendous turnout last year, Mr. DeZale and I are putting the final touches on, but basically a track meet type format with all kinds of things going on, math, B, robotics, hovercrafts. This was a really, really unique experience last year, I think, for the kids, and kindergarten wants in on it, so they're gonna be part of the class competitions this, this coming year. Couple other thoughts, the science department's very grateful for the continued support from our parents, admin, and school board. We continually receive more praise and positive feedback from parents who support our efforts to raise the rigor and expectations in our classrooms. As one parent told me at conferences, today's sacrifice is tomorrow's benefit. We still need to do a better job of communicating our expectations. I think this could be for any curricular area, but we continue to try to work on the science program to communicate to parents and students our expectations and how we can reach those. I also wanna remind this, and I say this to parents and teachers and fellow students, science is not a unique subject, I think it's a misconception. It's an amalgamation of math, we do a lot of collecting and analyzing data, we do a lot of reading, charts, graphs, and a lot of writing, communicating our ideas to others. So it's important to remember that students don't initially struggle or excel at science, because they're both good at science, it's because they struggle or excel at math, reading, or writing, so. That's something that I wanna make, do a better job of communicating, is that science is really three subjects in one broom, and it's difficult sometimes. I think sometimes that's confusing. We'll continue to emphasize the importance of productive struggle in our classrooms, meaning learning is a struggle, and part of being successful is to learn how to learn, how to overcome those obstacles, Superintendent DeZale did a nice job of the productive struggle pyramid that we take the kids and show them, we emphasize it. It's a neat visual reminder of what it takes to be successful, and I think that needs to be, just permeate our whole school, is it takes sacrifice sometimes. One other thing I forgot to mention is that after some talks with Mr. DeZale and Mr. Hertz, we are going to slightly change the science curriculum at high school to allow juniors to take physics or chemistry. They're both, plenty of thinking going on in both classes, but the thought is that if students have the opportunity at the junior level to take physics, a little more hands-on, a little more possibly applicable to some students, that they would see this, the benefit of that, and then maybe take chemistry through senior year, or at least have the opportunity to take that, take physics their, their junior year. And last, my closure, so this would be where I would say, okay, lesson's over, quote unquote, I'd have a better segue than that. Than just say, we're done, now we, I'd, I'd find some way to segue into this. I have two questions, this is maybe my closure or my exit ticket, so this is something I would ask my students to talk about. And I know there's about a bell, a minute before the bell rings, so I gotta get this done here quick. Since twenty nineteen, so typically, one of them is a very like, okay, content type question, I'm looking for a specific answer. Since twenty nineteen, how many years has SO ISAS science scores, not ACT, ISAS, how many years has Iowa IS, our ISAS science scores been above the state average? So you have to look at something, you look in your notebook, or look up the answer, okay, Wedge wants a specific answer here. And the second one is something more along, along big picture, something you learned, something you're confused about, so that would drive my instruction the next day, so. It's obvious they got number one, right, they know the number of schools, but boy, several students said they were a little fuzzy on this topic over here, I better make sure that's my bell ringing tomorrow. So maybe a full minute, see if you can find the answer to number one. Since twenty nineteen, how many years has our science ISAS score been above the state average? And what's something you learned or have a question about from the presentation? So one minute, talk to your partners, ready, set, go.
Four, five, depends on, cross five.
Correct, I'd say different. You could say all of them, four and five.
Right, four, yeah.
Still missing that data.
Can we assume that we would have been over, based on trends? That's right, that's right.
Wait, no, interpolation.
No.
Between points.
Yep, you're right.
Wow, was that in your statistics courses?
That would be a statistic, exactly.
I thought it was.
It's never a waste of time.
Statistics is. No, something you learned. So I always make sure, like, no. That way you have a heads up, so it's not shocking. Right, you're supposed to let the students know all that.
Builds confidence.
Okay, so, the way this is supposed to work a little better is I talk to Mr. DeZale, so I know he's gonna give me the right answer. So that I don't wanna embarrass him, and if the answer is four, he says eight, no, now it knows four, oh geez, I just embarrassed him. So I know he's, he's got the right answer, so, Mr. DeZale, how many years has SO's science score been above state average?
All of them, or four out of five.
Outstanding, you're not surprised by that?
No.
No, of course not, good job, thank you for checking that out. So then I'd go to, because there's one answer, so we got that answer, take care, so then I would open up the floor. I was supposed to come talk to Jamie right away, so I know he's got an answer that I'm prepared for, so. But I did tell him that I'm gonna come to him first for number two, what's something you learned or a question you have?
I guess the one thing I learned and really hit home was to be good at science, you need to be good in math, reading, and writing.
Typically?
All three kind of play a part in that.
So which one of those do you think you would have struggled, of those three that make up science, which would be your weakness that you're gonna work to become a strength?
By reading, maybe.
Initially enough, more students struggle with the writing. Then of those three, that's probably takes the most time we spend working with the kids on. Case I know it makes sense in your brain, but what you've written here really confuses me, can we, it takes a lot of time to articulate that. But, reading, they don't seem to remind too much, they really don't, but that would have been mine, was reading, that was, that was in science. Another person?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah.
So you said physics is gonna be incorporated as a class for juniors?
So currently, physics is limited to seniors.
Right.
And we're gonna allow juniors to take it, we'll have to some, tweak in the curriculum, because we still have to hit state standards. But we were, had some good conversations that there won't be any less thinking going on, but maybe this would be a different kind of class for kids that, I think we phrased it that are for sure not going to a four-year college. If you go to a four-year college, you have to take chemistry, that's just non-negotiable. But if you're a two-year, or, how do we phrase it?
Two-year trades, workforce, physics might be a better fit, because it is more of a hands-on approach. And it's gonna be things that they're gonna come across, they'll come across chemistry too, but they'll come across quite a bit of physi, quite a bit of the physics content.
So like, several students over the years took physics because they wanna be a power lineman or electrician, we spent a whole unit on electricity. So yeah, some of those more hands-on-y things, we'll see what happens, but yeah, we're, we're excited about that. Good question. I need one more, and then the class dismissed. Except for this guy here, we're gonna do a reteaching, we call that, where we hold a kid after class with some one-on-one conversations.
So then you're going to, so say, for a guy that, or a student that wants to be an engineer?
Sure.
Is the other physics gonna be different, or?
No, it's same physics.
It's gonna be the same?
Yep, it's the same rigor that you would take whether you're gonna be a power lineman, engineer, chemist, it's the same level, definitely. So it's not gonna be any, you know, kids are kids, you know, I was seventeen once, what, what's the easiest one? You know, I got Mr. Smith math and Mrs. Jones math, you got these, the kids, there won't be any easy, it'll be different, a different level of thinking.
Think after you two had talked about it, I remember when you came in and we're talking about it afterwards, I'd gone through, I think you used the word, maybe you said this tonight already, but a lot more hands-on stuff. I just remember that's how you had presented it to me.
And not that kids that take chemistry are good hands-on, but different, and we're hopeful that kids that, you know, take chemistry through junior year, because quite a few do end up taking physics because they, they want the fourth year. It's intentional over the years, I've had students that took physics because they just want a tough challenge, I've take, have had kids, well, one student wanted to be a pastry chef, why are you taking physics? Because I'm gonna build stuff. True, I didn't think about that. So it's just interesting, the different thought that goes into that. Okay, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Wedge, thank you. Moving on to our two-minute board policy and finance moment.
So I put some policies in there, and I'll try and keep this brief, but just as a reminder on why it's important for confidentiality when we're discussing things, and kinda connecting back to the forum here on student records and employee records, and number one, just because laws state that we can't talk about that in a, in a public forum, but we have policy that does that as well. And there's processes in place that if there's issues or things that come up, and you guys have experienced that, that if it comes to the point to be presented to the board, that we go to closed session on that, so there's reasons those things are in, in place to do that, and so I just attached that just kind of as a reminder. The second half is on the, the school finance part. Those that have been on the board for a couple of years, you probably remember every time we get our audit back, Christine and Kendra have done a, a great job of cleaning that up, but there's always that comment on segregation of duties, and so one of the things the state's really trying to incorporate that they haven't done literally for the past twenty years, is trying to really work on reducing that comment on the number of audits, and that's really hard in small schools. And so that is actually one of the things that they've given us some advice on, so we're looking at doing some things that hopefully we can maybe get that off there, changing some things just to try and meet the true letter of the law. It's hard when you only have so many, we only have so many people in the central office, you can only do so many things, we can't, you know, hire someone else just to get an audit comment off, so just realigning, you know, realigning what we're doing already, and trying to figure out some different ways to do things. I don't know, Kendra, did you wanna add anything that I didn't say?
It's just difficult to do with, we're just trying to be a little more creative of having others review something or sign up on it, or. It's challenging.
So we still might get the comment on it, but we are working and trying to do that, yeah. And then speaking of that, we did get notice too, just if anyone asks, the audit for FY twenty-three will be extended to June thirty, right?
Yeah.
June thirty, because they don't have that done, so it's not from our end, it's from the auditors, but we just got that notice this week, so just letting you know.
We've done it before, so hopefully they have it done by June thirty.
All right. Follow-up from our work session on the twentieth, that was when Luann was here, and we talked about the superintendent evaluations and working together as a team. And I know right now here, that seems like a while ago, because it was, but maybe if you could think back and maybe share one insight from that evening, that you got out of it from that evening? If you'd be willing to share anything?
I thought that article that she had us go through as a board, and when we split up that eight traits of effective boards, it really gave us a good basis for our discussion for the whole evening. Just taking a look at those things, and then what we felt were important traits, and I thought it was cool that we saw all of them as important, and, and we could see where, as a board, we thought more were important than others. So in planning and moving ahead, it gives us some good information to focus on.
Any others wanted to share anything? I did put the letter up here that you guys had, but that Luann sent us.
Yep, and we really did do, I thought it was, I don't know, it was surprising, but it was good that we all kinda were on the same ideas too.
Yes, and I think we're, and I'm trying to make an attempt to continue with training, but that was kind of cool. I think that night too, that everyone, and we divided into the small groups and, and then coming back, talked about that, to continue to do that, the training and learning and different things like that. That's one of the things I remembered anyway. Anyone else have anything?
I just think that whenever Luann has come, it has been beneficial for us. I think it's good learning and helps us as a board just to be more productive and, and know where we're going and the hard work that we do. Yeah. Appreciate that time.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on then.
So in doing due diligence, I knew we wouldn't be able to like fully discuss this, um, the work session from March seventh with Site Logic, but I put this on here for us to maybe, you know, bring up some big picture topics and things like that, but really then also to discuss, um, I think, and Laurel and I have talked about this, but having a night where we do a work session, but just on this topic, I think to talk about what our goals and next steps are, on anything that we wanna look at. There's no hidden objective or anything like that. This is just what they presented, and then we use that how we want to. But, um, before we start looking at dates or ideas, any just overall arching questions or ideas or comments from that night that any of you may have?
I just think it really put it in perspective, like, what it, you know, to maintain what you have, um, is very important, cause replacement cost is astronomical.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I guess I had a question. So like, if, if we did change to that, what they were all talking about, that what does maintenance and repair cost for that stuff too, when it goes, I mean, not all new things are holdup, you know? Is that the same, is it very costly as what we have currently to repair if something goes wrong with the new stuff too?
The idea would hopefully be the system wouldn't be as costly to maintain. I, I don't have a dollar amount.
Right. I just didn't know if they had given you like repairs if this happens is roughly this amount versus for this old stuff is roughly this amount, you know, I didn't know if they had.
I do know, you know, cause there's geothermal, but then you still have the units in each room, so there's, you know, with the, it's not a heat pump, but it's the similar idea, so the cost of replacing those would be similar. Some of that, like I said in the presentation, would determine whether we decided when we did this to replace them or use our existing ones, cause then that would affect, you put new ones in, we'd probably have a window where we're not replacing any for a while. Just kind of depends on the scope. But ideally overall, you, you put it in place to extend the life, and then hopefully you lower your maintenance costs.
Right, right. I just didn't know if maintenance was higher on newer things versus older things, you know? That was, that was really all I was.
That I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, that's really all I was wondering, I guess.
And I guess we hear so much about like parts, getting parts for things. And some of our things, I was amazed that they haven't been replaced because when they looked at the overall life of them, we were pretty darn close on some of those and even over on some. So we're lucky that things are still in running order and they've been, they've been kept up well. So I guess that's, you know, a big positive.
For the older stuff.
For our, yeah, for our older stuff, but a big positive for our maintenance people who take care of those things, yeah.
So we had a, as an example, I don't remember if I said this that night, we had a heat pump go out in a first grade classroom. So they're out with, out with the main heat, the secondary heat they have, but it stayed cold. And so we had to order one in. How long was, how long really without that?
A couple of days for sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, was it a full week, but?
Close. I don't think it was quite a full week.
So yeah, it was not very warm in that room, but it was because of delays in ordering it, and it's hard to find a part. So at that time, Greg said, can I just order, it's more expensive, order two, so the next one goes out and it's negative degrees. We don't have to wait again, you know? So you start having to make those kind of decisions to do that. So, and we did order two, and haven't had to use the other one, but that's kind of the decisions you gotta make.
I think of vehicles. If I buy a newer vehicle, the parts cost me more, but at least I can get a part for it, you know what I mean?
Easier than an older, yeah.
Right, that's kind of, that's kind of the tipping point where we're running into a while. It may cost more to get those parts. At least we can get the parts and get them fairly quickly. I think to Mr. Rosell's point of sometimes it takes us a while, and sometimes we just can't even find the parts anymore. It's become.
And unfrustratingly simple brakes too. Like we had a crash bar go out.
Yeah.
And it was out for, on a door, just the crash bar on a door into the gym, broke. And they like didn't make
That model anymore?
Those anymore. So I think Greg, you know, is good at his job and got it all working again, but it's, yeah, it's just like, those are the things you deal with when equipment gets old.
So wondering if it'd be possible right now, I think just to set a date for us to have some more of these in-depth discussions here, coming up before ideally the April fifteen board meeting. That's when our next meeting is. Um, and I know dates fill up quickly, I get that. Um, next week might be a little quick, and we have a budget hearing already next week, so I'm thinking that's probably out of the picture. So where my recommendation, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, my recommendation is we're already looking into that week after Easter, the week of April one, Monday, April one. So I can actually probably on Tuesday, the second. And then that week, cause we wouldn't meet on the first necessarily, but didn't know between that and the next week, if there's a night that everyone knows that may potentially work. What about April second? I don't have school events, I should pull that up. Thank you.
I won't be, April second won't work for me.
Okay. I did pull up, I'm gonna pull that up, never mind. Oops.
There's soccer.
There's soccer. What about Wednesday, the third?
What time are you thinking? Like five, five o'clock, five thirty?
Five thirty?
I think five thirty.
Would that work?
Yeah.
Wow.
April third?
Wednesday, April third?
He said five thirty.
At five thirty? Obviously I haven't set it up and similarly sent it out, but let's, let's plan on that then. We'll get more information, but just that we have the date. So Wednesday, April third at five thirty. All right. And if that has to change, we'll let you know.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Then moving on to new business, um, consider approval of fireworks at a baseball game.
Oops, sorry. So the friends are asking once again to fire the fireworks at a baseball game. They don't have the date. And when I originally read this, I thought we had to, but I, I found out, we, they normally don't. They just ask for permission and they'll let us know the date later, cause that depends on the availability of the ma- availability of the manufacturer, and then as you get closer to the weather, cause it has to be under a certain mile an hour winds and all that good stuff. So they're just asking for permission to do that again this summer.
Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
I need to approve the fireworks at the baseball game.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. And approval of new ES, ECSE position.
Um, Kent alluded to this in his board report, but with some of the growing needs, specifically special needs, so it's early childhood special education. Um, we are advocating to add a position down in that preschool age room. Um, you're hearing me say to add that in a time when I'm talking about we have to shrink, so we would ideally do this without adding staff. Have someone hopefully internally fill that and make adjustments at the elementary. What this means is, try and give this a real quick description, is in the preschool, there's kids that are on, already identified and are on, in special education services. And we're seeing those needs at that level grow. And right now, they're all day, when they're there, they're half-days, but they're fully, the full-time that they're there in school, they're with the general ed population, and there's enough of them now. It's hard to service their needs while you're servicing the rest of the general ed population in those preschool classrooms. So we're asking for this position that would be specifically to work with those kids, and then they could team with the other preschool teachers and, um, bring them in as necessary.
Don't happen to have a person in mind in staff that might know it or not?
Yeah, we do. But we would, we would post internally.
Right.
Yep.
And that would take special ed certification or not?
It's a special, or, cause it's preschool ECSE endorsement. It's not just special ed.
Okay.
Would that be the fair way to say it?
Yeah, it's the early childhood special education endorsement.
Endorsement, okay.
The endorsements typically run K six, I believe, maybe, for special education, or K eight, something like that. And then early childhood, which would be pre-K. Pre-kindergarten.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve, uh, opposed? Okay, motion made, and K. Consider approval of district property insurance rotation.
So if it seems like we just did this in February, we did. We did. You're, you're correct. There's been, since we approved that, um, some upcoming changes and, and moves of the ownership of local insurance agencies. And so we had approved Gartner Insurance, and they decided at the time they don't wanna be in our rotation anymore. They have talked to us since then. And so I appreciated that before we get into the year for that. So we will be down to a rotation of two, and we have already spoken with HP and, um, the block specifically there, and they're already in all the work to get our next insurance quotes going through them now for the property insurance. So it would be two agencies now on a two-year rotation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the insurance rotation as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And consider approval of Save and Pepel projects.
So I presented this to the facilities committee, and after talking with, um,
we just lost, there's something again. Now I was thinking.
There we go.
Yep.
Presented as the facilities committee and talking with those at school and with Greg and putting it together, these are five projects right now that I'm recommending for this spring slash summer. I don't know that will necessarily get any done this spring, so each one, I would say should be voted on approved. So what I'll do is I'll explain this, each one, maybe you can ask questions if you have any, if you don't, fine. And then we would vote to approve. So the first one is for, um, if you go straight north out of the daycare slot, and it's kind of kitty corner from the elementary gym, I'm pointing the wrong way. Kitty corner from the elementary gym, straight north out of the daycare, those big two ugly, um, or they seen their better day, um, evergreens. So we would remove those and then, cause that's where the edge of the parking lot, straight north out of the daycare stops, and then we would pave from there onto the road and provide a little additional parking for our staff and hopefully relieve some pressure at the daycare as well.
Okay. Is there a motion for this one?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Next one.
So the second one is to put, to tear up the existing cement and then smit, and then put cement down in the entire area between the elementary gym, so it'd be south of the elementary gym, and then the backside of the kitchen or the, there's a service entry there where they bring supplies and the kitchen's food there. And then on the west side is the back of some classrooms. Um, it's guarded three sides by the elementary building. And then there's cement in there, but there's also a grassy area, and we keep our, um, garbage cans for the elementary down there. We would take that all out and cement the entire area. It'd just be more room for the trucks when they back in to unload stuff, the city's garbage trucks to get in there. Have a little bit more space for those when they come. A lot of the staff that come between the two buildings, specifically the kitchen and the building principal over here, that's kind of where they park and come in, so those are the, it wouldn't necessarily add spaces overall, but it would relieve some pressure for them and when the trucks come in. And then part of that project would also be then, um, putting tiling down so that you could drain the water and get it to drain on the, um, discus field. So we would tear up through the daycare parking lot, hopefully do it over a weekend to minimize the disruption, put some tiling down, and then cement that back in. So that's why there's two pages there.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this? Is there discussion otherwise?
I make a motion to repave the elementary between kitchen and gym and daycare.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. Next one.
This is the quote from McDonald's Roofing to repair and, um, replace is a tricky word, but it would be replace the upper coating and repair the roof over the gym. It's getting to the point, that's not where we have the most leaks, but there's some, and you really don't want leaks to start happening in your gym, cause that causes big issues.
And maybe if you wanna explain how we prioritize these, I guess, or
Yes.
Are there kind of an order how we thought those should get completed, I guess, if they can't get to them all.
Yes. Thank you for saying that too, and I think I actually switched the last two around. So this would, if they don't get to them all, um, or have time to do the scope of the projects, this would be the most important roof project and talking with Greg and explaining that to the facilities committee. Um, not that you need to vote on the priority tonight, but just kind of know that's what we're telling them. This would be the one, if we had to pick one, that we would want done first.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none, is somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the bid on the high school gym, uh, repair and installation as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. Moving on to the science area roof repair.
So this would be the one that actually we would ask them to worry about last. Hopefully they get all three done. But it's a smaller area over the science area. We, we occasionally get some leaks, especially when we get a lot of melting snow in the corner science room in Aaron's area and into the hallway there. So that's obviously why we're looking at that. They're not a hundred percent sure always where it's come from, so they're hoping if they would replace that area, that that would deal with that. But you could see, if you remember when Site Logic was here, some of those pictures they took is from that area. Those were the examples.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion? So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. And the seventh and eighth grade wing.
The fifth project, this would be the second roof repair in order of importance would be over, I'm gonna say the seventh and eighth wing, cause it's not exactly over there, but it kind of starts on the hallway um, just off the gym and extends over that seventh and eighth wing. Now, this year we have had, not had near the problems. We also have not had near the snow or ice buildup, but in the past few years before this winter, that's probably where we've had the most leaks. Um, but it's just a matter of priority in years past and not having, um, the funds and time to get that done last year. So yes, this year, that hasn't leaked as much, but we know in the past if we have more snowfall or buildup, we have, and they, they know it's because of issues in the roof right there. So hopefully this would take care of that.
Let's McDonald's come here. Are they thinking about starting one project and then just keep on going, or are they gonna have?
That's my, that's my understanding. He said, I mean, they'll, they'll have other projects, but hopefully, he said they could whip a couple of them in his words, out a couple of them at the same time, just to kind of depends on timing and how things go and, and the weather, once they get started, cause you never know that with roofing. weather, once they get started, because you never know that with roofing.
Any other questions?
Tyler Wise, how's that sitting into the budget fine, or?
For the, yeah, these would come out of, that's a great question, Save and PEPAL funds, and so yes, we would be able to do that, correct.
Make a motion to do the middle school seventh and eighth ring roof repair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consider approval of fund transfer.
As it says, when the state of Iowa sends in our money from the tax revenue for the vote of PEPAL, they send it to our general fund, but it needs to go to PEPAL, so we have to have a board motion to make that transfer, and the amount is listed there.
That amount will need to be read in the motion, I guess, or not?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So do I have somebody who can make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of PEPAL dollars out of general fund to the PEPAL account in the amount of $50,846.29.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. AEA purchasing agreement.
So the AEA purchasing agreement, and you can see where it is, but just is the ability to use the power of the AEA collectively to buy down costs and get them cheaper than what we would get on our own. They charge 50% per case, primarily it's goods for the kitchen, but then what is not spent on administrative is given back in a rebate check at the end of the year.
Is there any questions on that? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the AEA purchasing agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Consider approval of open enrollment requests as sending district.
And there is none right now?
Okay, and then approval of new contracts.
So we have two, some of them you might feel that we've talked about for a while, but it was with timing after the last board meeting. So Bethany DeBoer would be the new middle school counselor, school counselor, and then Kelly Westfall would be the 812 English Language Arts. So that's technically Mr. Schuler's position. He's 912, and if you remember last month when, yeah, that was last month when Marie was talking about and how we're restructuring that stuff, and between her and the new person sharing 812, so that's why it's listed as 812.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve new contracts.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is passed. Percent of income surtax on EPP.
So we have a voter-approved PEPAL, the voter-approved property plant and equipment levy, which comes from property taxes. As part of that, we can do an income surtax, and an income surtax, the best way to explain what that is, is it's a tax on a tax. So you get an additional tax when you pay X amount of income tax, but the money that comes in from that then reduces property tax expense. We have historically annually established that rate, and in the past, we have done that. Right now, we don't know, I had put in here that state supplemental aid is proposed at 2.5%, when we talk about our budget next week, I'm going to show you why we put it at 2%, which is a whole another story, but we'll explain that later. Anyway, we are recommending putting that rate at 5%. Last year it was set at 6, but if you take in too many dollars, then you can't have a negative tax rate for property tax, so it was lowered to 4. So we recommend putting it at 5.
Is there any questions or Mr. Dizay on that?
Make a motion to set the income tax or tax rate at 5% for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Establish the percent of the income surtax on the instructional support levy.
So if you remember, last summer, we passed the resolution to continue forward for five more years, the instructional support levy, and so we're very appreciative of that. Part of that can come from an income surtax as well, and it's been at 4%. We recommend putting that rate to fund that at 5%, and then hopefully without any big changes for the immediate future, next several years, the income surtax rate would be at 5% for both of those moving forward.
Is there any questions about that one? Okay, is someone willing to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to set the income surtax rate at 5% on the instructional support levy for the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. First reading of board policies with no changes.
So these policies have no changes on them, no content changes, you know, comment from the state, and we are one of many, many schools that got this comment, but technically this policy is supposed to approved annually. So if we approve this now, I can update that this week, and then we'll start doing that in the fall instead.
Okay.
And if you approve it tonight, we would waive the second reading.
Okay. So the recommendations should state that also, the reading, the second reading. Okay, does someone make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the policy, 505.08 and 505.08 are one, and waive the second reading of these policies.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. And board table discussion tool.
Okay, so... This is an attachment, but I printed these out as well. There you go.
Yep.
If you need a pen, I bought a, I just grabbed a box and there's 50 in there. We have plenty in there, but I have pens up here if you need them for now or for later. So this is one of the trainings through IASB they offer that we'll do, and then we, when I upload this later, we'll get, we'll get credit for, for hours, as I haven't done it before, but as I understand or read through this, and we had talked about last meeting to do more of these, I thought this would be applicable tonight because it talks about evaluations, and this is going to talk about specifically in the scenario with a principal, but you could apply this to, it doesn't just have to be that situation. You could apply this to talking about, I don't even want to hint because then people think, but you could, you could apply this to talking about the high school science teacher, or the second grade teacher, or the baseball coach, or the football, right, anyone that has a position that could be evaluated by someone. They're just using specifically in here, when we get to that scenario, the principal, and I just wanted to state that, they make it very generic, but really applies to anyone, if that makes sense. So, and they kind of give us the tools to go through this, so we'll just go through this together, and it's kind of an open discussion, so. Can the board know when action is being taken with staff that might eventually result in a resignation or termination? This is kind of the topical view. So, and they call these at-the-board tables. It gives you an opportunity to consider these type of questions, and like, like I said, when they're dealing with evaluations, resignations, it includes all of those type of things. So we're going to start here. So I'll read through these, and you don't have to say whether you got these right or wrong. We'll go, we'll go over them as we, as we move along here, but I'll give you an opportunity to answer, and then they'll go through a discussion on it. So the first one, and it's right on your sheet there as well, but it says, "The right to privacy means that personal information is protected from public scrutiny. This does not include information about job performance." So this one's answer is, "It depends." So it is definitely true, but here's why. When their contract is terminated or an employee resigns, the facts related to it may be, may be public record, and obviously to prove a resignation, they would have to turn in a letter, and then you approve of that. There are times where you may need to be made aware, and that's why they say, "It depends. Contact your legal counselor." There's obviously times where that's confidential information, so most of the time it is, but there are specific times where you have to be made aware, hence why it depends. That's what they're getting at here. So they started you off with kind of a tricky one. Number two, "The board approves all contracts with employees."
It depends.
Technically, it is. You are right, it is true. Iowa law permits the board, though, to delegate the hiring and signing of support staff to the superintendent. Now here, we've had a tradition, any new contract, I put on the board agenda and you guys approve. Technically, support staff could be approved by me, and you would leave that up to be delegated. That's why they said it depends. It depends on what your policy and past practice, but it could be that we decide, I don't need to present the pares that are, that's what they mean by support staff, or maybe even the janitorial staff, if we're offering them a position, didn't necessarily have to be approved by the board. That's what they're getting at there. We have traditionally, if you put true, yes, you have approved usually all new contracts. And hence why sometimes with support staff, if there's been a need, we've presented it, and as long as they've cleared in our processes, we've gotten them started and then approved it at the board meeting. Hence why we've been able to do that. Number three, "If an employee such as a substitute teacher does not have a formal contract with the district, the board can see any records that are kept about that employee's work in the district." So like if there's an evaluation, what they're getting at of, of a substitute teacher, you as a board member would have the right to view that since they don't have a formal contract. That's what it's saying. True or false?
Probably depends.
Need another answer. True, false, or the depends.
What kind of records do we keep on substitute teachers?
Correct. So this is false because that is confidential information, and they don't have, even though they don't have a formal contract, it doesn't matter. Now, I don't know that we do formal evaluations here of substitutes. We don't. But I can imagine like in a big district where maybe that's almost like a full-time job, or they could come every day, they might do that.
My brother-in-law, that's what he does. He's a substitute teacher for Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
And there I could see maybe that's where they do do that, or evaluate them on their effectiveness or something like that. But regardless, we don't do that, but even if we did, just because they don't have a formal contract doesn't mean that their evaluation is subject to, to be read publicly or by the board. It would still be confidential information. So yes, this one did have an answer. "The board may see blank copies of the evaluation instruments that are used by professional evaluators in the district." So blank means not filled out by anyone, right? Without any names? Yep. If you would ask true, it's because the board may see a blank copy of the instrument that will be used, but can't see one that is completed. Number five, "Upon request, a board member should have access to the completed evaluation of a building principal." False. So they say your best practice would be to say that a board member should not have access to completed evaluations other than that of the superintendent, hence why we're doing that tonight, right? There are legal reasons why this comes out to the whole board as part of the statutory process, and advanced knowledge should separate it. So I think they, in talking to Luanne on some of these, that one she had pointed out, they did the principal one on that question. This isn't the scenario, specifically because sometimes even in our own minds, we think administration slash principals are different than a teacher or a pair or a coach, but really they fall under the same confidentiality guidelines. So I think that's why that one was put in place and so forth. So even their evaluations would be confidential. And what if you came into a situation where we had to recommend, or a school, I should say, had to recommend termination, it'd be under the same things. If you had seen that ahead of time, then that you could be considered biased, and now you can't rule in that situation. So I think it's just those five there, right, the first part? So questions on any of those? Kind of a little bit of a primer as we move forward. Okay, we'll keep moving then. So the scenario, you can follow along.
Carrie concerned has been a tree field board member for 12 years. The first 10 years of her tenure, Sam sympathetic with superintendent. Carrie always felt like Sam would listen to her and help her understand what was really happening in the district. It was common for him to tell her, "Now, this is in strictest confidence, but here's what is actually going on. For the last two years, the new superintendent, Larry Lawful, has not seemed to value her suggestions and need to know nearly as much as Sam did. Carrie just saw the agenda for next Monday night's board meeting. The board will be receiving and voting on accepting Teacher Tamara Terrific's mid-year resignation. This is a tragedy in Carrie's eyes. Tamara has been a great teacher and is much loved in the district. One of Carrie's sources of information told her the resignation is based on Tamara simply not agreeing with the evaluation suggestions of the brand-new and much younger middle school principal Cal Cutting Edge. Another teacher came to Carrie and said, "We are losing Tamara because Cal's just so unyielding. If you try to suggest doing things the old way, he's downright insulting. He says things like, 'It's a new world, get used to it.' He's borderline abusive. He told Tamara to quit complaining and stay out of his office, that he had better things to do than listen to her old-fashioned ideas." Carrie went to Superintendent Larry immediately after she saw the agenda. "Larry, I can't vote in favor of that resignation unless you give me a good reason to do so," she stated emphatically. "Tell me what has motivated this resignation. We can't lose one of our best teachers, and I'm afraid she's going to be the leader of a parade. There are some special circumstances that led to this resignation, and I am recommending the board accept the resignation," Larry explained, "but I am not at liberty to discuss the circumstances." "Don't ask the board to do something we don't know the reasons for," Carrie protested. "If you don't tell me now, I will not vote for the resignation, and I'll stay fine. I know I can get the support of at least two other board members."
So there's the scenario. So as we get going here, and, and you can look back as she read it, just exactly as that page reads out there. Why is Carrie upset ultimately here?
She's not getting the information she wants.
Yeah.
She feels like she's not getting the whole story of what she wants to know.
The information, the whole story, and I think information that she somewhat got in the past.
Sure.
I would say, right? Is that understandable, if you were in her shoes?
Yeah.
So, and I'll go through, they kind of had some of their slides, and sometimes they point out things that are really good to consider on some of these questions. Yeah, she's used to having the inside information, and there are times as a board member, you do have stuff that maybe the public doesn't know, that's a part of it, but this is a little bit different situation. "The new superintendent has chosen not to give this board member the inside information, and she's finding that frustrating. There may be a standing expectation that board members will be in the know about personnel issued based on past experience, but that doesn't mean that was the right or good idea. At times, there are times when the board will not know the precise reasons behind personnel recommendations, and it can be frustrating, excuse me, but the lack can be in the best interest. And like I said, you never know, if it has to go to that next step, and that comes out that the board knew that or found out about it ahead of time..." that or found out about it ahead of time and had a chance to think through that you've now removed yourself from being impartial or can have those decisions that the board needs to make overturned and you would not we wouldn't want that to happen or I shouldn't say we a school board wouldn't want that to happen. So let's go on here why number two why is the superintendent not willing to talk to Carrie about more background information?
Obviously he's not supposed to. It's confidential.
Confidential okay.
Goes against board policy.
Gordon again's policy. Do you think he has something personal against Carrie in this situation?
Not necessarily but he could if she's created a reputation for that.
See what they have to say here. Says he's being careful to act in accordance with the laws which are sure the privacy of employees students etc. Hence I wasn't just completely out of left field when I put her policies at the beginning about student employee confidentiality Larry believes it's his duty to the district as a whole and to ethical and professional management practices that he's doing this. Yeah he could have something personal but he's not making it as a personal decision against Carrie because he would do this to any board member that came in and she's just the one that's coming in Carrie cares a lot or something what is her name?
Concerned.
Carrie concerned Carrie concerned. All right so is it realistic for the superintendent to expect the board to simply act accept the resignation and trust it's the right thing to do?
That's why we hired you to do that.
And I think over time that becomes easier you know as you work with one another too I think.
I 100% agree.
You get to know the person more too.
On the same page.
Yep from what you've done in the past or whatever on different topics.
And trainings that we go through I mean I think about all of the trainings that just in my short time on the board I've learned a lot and stuff that I didn't necessarily know before but we've had good discussions about those too.
Yeah realistic maybe it is what they're not asking what is doesn't mean it's easy no it's not it's not we know that can be challenging at times but it is something that is realistic and needs to happen. And here's what happened oftentimes is sometimes what's said publicly isn't the reasons that are really behind that privately and that's hard to say to people when you know that and you can't so they're bringing this up Tamara may have personal reasons for resigning that Larry can't talk about which she might not feel comfortable disclosing and so she says here's the reasons but publicly doesn't say that and Larry can't say anything about it the superintendent for example there may be an outside personal issue in her life right now she could have a serious health concern that she doesn't want people to know about and you can't reveal for not only personnel issues but for hip issues right difficulties with specific students or challenges with the parents hopefully wouldn't come to that for a mid-year but you never know that she doesn't want presented. I like this point right here not that that means it but you know she's saying she's resigning because she she doesn't like the principal's evaluation without saying that directly if she does feel that that principal is does not feel that he's being fair there's actually methods and there's avenues for her to take in that situation that doesn't have to come to a resignation you can file an appeal you can work with the association on things if you truly felt that they were not being evaluated correctly as a staff that wouldn't come to the board right so that might in like it said file a grievance I remember when I read this I'm like oh I didn't even think about that you know and assistance could be provided through the teachers association it wouldn't just be oh I don't like my evaluation I'm going to resign right there's there's methods and avenues for her to do that. So I think that's so sometimes when we hear that that might be an easy reason but there might be other reasons why they're turning that in mid-year that we're not aware of or can't we as a board aren't aware of but can't be made privy to either. And I liked this thought here too it's it's not the board's responsibility to assist Tamara in dealing with difficulty she may have with her evaluator right there's processes in place for that for her to do that it really only becomes to the board unless it it only involve you guys when it comes to the whole board through that established process that there has to be a hearing set up or something like that to determine it because doing it ahead of time once again puts that in jeopardy there will be times when the superintendent may ask the board to respect his or her meaning the superintendent's professional judgment without knowing all the details doesn't mean that's easy but it might happen. And that can be very frustrating at times we know that especially if you guys are getting and you're going to be the ones that get the community pressure hearing about it or people are going to tell you oh here's the real story right like they said there's often multiple times to a story but really that's the the role of the school and the superintendent to do that. Thoughts about that right there or anything that was said on that question?
I think sometimes policy and the law can be difficult to understand but it is like you know exactly that that is it ethical to have that information shared beyond where it should be shared and there are processes and that was good to point out there are processes always for people to follow if they're unhappy with a situation or whatever and I I think that's one thing as a board it's easy to get put into a position but we have to also be aware of what our role is and that we can't be a part of that conversation and to to ask people to follow the correct procedures.
Yeah and I liked the last point too and it's like they pointed out let's say let's just go down the road that it determines she she follows the correct path that the principal was evaluating her unfairly let's just let's just say that happened well eventually that might come back because of the the termination and she might say hey I resigned for being evaluated unfairly that would probably come back as a hearing be presented for the board to eventually rule on well if that came out to the process that you guys were made aware of that ahead of that time guess how that hearing is going to go yeah it's going to be ruled against the school then because you guys found out confidential nation information ahead of time before it was presented as part of the process and not that it goes that that extent all the time but it's important to be aware of there are processes in place for them in this situation right? What are some unintended consequences with Carrie taking action in this situation not that she intended him but you know there's always the unintended consequences as a result of her asking for this inside information right I think is how they put it?
It hurts the relationship with the superintendent and potentially other board members.
So how would that make the other four I guess feel if you find out later that Carrie was finding the inside story but the others weren't?
Like we were kind of left in the dust.
Right yeah exactly. And so that they point out a few different things you know has to protect the best interests of the district and she said she's going to speak up and here's one I didn't think about till I read this if Carrie speaks up in the meeting and accuses the middle school principal of driving out a great teacher without knowing everything that went on now now you have the board expressing negative opinions about an employee who technically wasn't involved they weren't turning in their resignation but now you said that in a public forum based on hearsay about the administrator what do you think that's going to do for their trust right I hadn't even thought of that part to be honest. If the superintendent is working let's say there were just making this up here let's say this there were some issues and so there is a plan just like teachers can be on one administrators could be one on on a plan and the superintendent's working through that with the principal on areas such as providing effective coaching and tactful corrective guidance that work could be jeopardized by the board's knowledge in this situation if they find that out before you get to the right channels and then that public meeting comment could affect the the professional rights and obligations of the board in that What if instead of accepting the resignation the board expresses what a fine job that this teacher is doing how well liked she is and so they don't allow her to resign and they make her fill out her contract? So they gave the the scenario oh sorry where are you saying?
She doesn't want to be there that's a problem for everyone.
If they don't want to be there that's a problem for everyone right what if there's information that you don't know that isn't made public so like let's say for a health reason they know they can't continue but they don't want that out there publicly and now you haven't allowed them to resign well now let's say they have I don't know some sort of medical issue treatments so now they're missing all these days in high school and well what's wrong?
What's up?
This is yeah I think Kendra said this expressed her desire to leave now she's being held in a place where she does not wish to stay what would that what will the situation be improved by the action yes we're losing a great teacher but would it be improved and what's the impact on student learning especially once it's in a public forum and everyone knows about it and what kind of precedent are we setting or the board setting I don't mean to use we here just saying that as a board are we getting by getting involved at this level will the board expect to investigate or he detailed reasons for every resignation that comes before them?
That's hoping a can of worms.
Yeah exactly. And then it says ultimately could impact the due process rights of that individual and the information that comes through the channels so then they wouldn't be considered impartial and then we are in a world of hurt there. And then it says any public discussion of staff performance issues at the board table invites public response and then the public will see this now this is another one I didn't think of the public sees this now as a direct pathway for them to make questions on personnel decisions and so it could actually make it a tougher job for the board involved in that situation because now they have people going on I heard the fourth grade teacher is not any better. I don't think you need more of that right? Any other thoughts on that question? So last one is what's the unintended some potential unintended consequences that could happen if Carrie actually gets the information she seeks Larry lawful or whatever his name is the new one gives her the information the inside scoop?
If something comes up later in litigation that would.
Yep okay and superintendent's indicated now he's got a pattern where he's done things that are questionable and and opened that door for that to happen in the future I think. And depending on what was shared just what you said Kristen could be violating and opens the door to litigation later protecting that confidential information. And like I think one of you guys mentioned this earlier it opens up the idea that the whole board knowing eventually that Carrie found out this and whether that's appropriate or not and they're going why didn't I find out right and then no one's happy in that situation it's not good for anyone. So and this is just a reminder legal reasons why this information comes to the board at a particular pre-established time why the process is in place and just individual members why having knowledge ahead of time is not recommended because it could jeopardize their ability to be unbiased in the future making a sound choice for the the decisions in the district. So overall final thoughts on any of that? Now they use this the only thing I'll they use the scenario of this teacher being we went two levels teacher being unhappy with the principal's evaluation but you could really apply that to information on like I said earlier the evaluation of a high school science teacher or the second grade teacher or the baseball coach or whatever you know any of those situations really you could apply this to this is just what they picked but it'd be the same same process same thought same answers. Other comments or thoughts on that? I was hoping that would be at least a little bit informative provide some insight and lead to the last discussion here is is one of your major roles as a board is to evaluate the superintendent right yeah right which is what we'll get to in a second here so. So and it just talks about the integrity of these situations and supporting each other both ways. And it says individual what I was getting to at the beginning of the night individual staff members and their students' right to privacy sometimes has to be balanced with the need for transparency individual rights when you got to you know you said when you got to balance them out there can always prevail so using common sense and just understanding that sometimes it can be frustrating with there's no question about that so and then it just says the the board's main thing is to hold the superintendent excuse me accountable for making those decisions and recommendations that are in the best interests of the district so and I think you guys opened that up Jamie said that too just building trust with that. There's anything insightful here. So it just talks about board policy contract negotiations and reports from staff at the board table those are all ways in which you can show your support for staff when they come here and thanking them for making their presentation or we make recommendations for contracts and negotiations and you approve increases those are the ways to show support and and to be involved directly because that is that is your role. But to provide that support not necessarily direct or intervene or evaluate so and that really the only person it's trying to get at that you evaluate is the superintendent. All right.
Thank you for going through that with us and we just added some more time to our trainings.
Yep.
Very good. Okay we will now move into closed session so I need a motion.
Yeah should we use a if someone wants to use the bathroom for a second?
Yes.
Are we going to get started?
Is there any decision on that or is it just more informational?
This last one?
The oh you on your evaluation stuff?
Yeah there's nothing.
So there wouldn't be anything that would be.
Next meeting and talking points.
Okay but just making sure there was any decision or anything that's.
No.
There will not be no.